I pray would you bless the community, bless all of those who call it home. Forgive us we've sinned against you Christ anyway. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before getting started, glad to see Kevin here tonight.
I'm glad to be here today, I promise.
Was that Wednesday after our meeting?
It was Tuesday after our meeting. It was Tuesday evening. So, glad you're glad on here.
Glad to do that.
Was that when I saw you up in hospital that day?
No, that was, I was with Cheryl that day. That night, taking that to her up there. But, it's God's good, he's good in the bad time, he's good in the good times.
Yeah.
He watched out over me, that and a bunch of prayers.
Did they just have to blow them out? I don't mean to be nosy.
No, they, they actually went in and just put a stand in. It was that main artery in the front of your heart, and the bottom part of it just collapsed. Claw didn't collapse, so they got to me in time, everything clicked. I told several of them, if he's gonna have a heart attack, it was just the perfect, everything went perfect. I needed to go to the doctor, I needed to take aspirin before I went home. Russell was sitting there waiting on me, the helicopter was right there close by. It just was, this God damn, on every move.
Well, your color looks good, so it looks like your heart's working.
Yeah, well, good, good.
You've been running, haven't you?
I, I ran that day, yeah, I just had to get through running and come in.
See, I was walking when I had my heart attack, and I told my doctor, I said, I thought walking is good for you, but it causes heart attacks.
Alright, were you guys okay?
Yes, sir.
Doing good. You too, darling.
Yeah.
Alright, uh, need a motion to call the meeting or?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Need a motion in a second to cover only what's on the agenda?
Shall we?
Done. Second. All in favor? Out of three, reading of the minutes?
The Hackleburg, I'm sorry.
I don't, I don't, no, usually, don't you put the date on here? Or you just say?
It's on the first paragraph.
What she said about Hackleburg?
She's rubbing it down. Sorry, I'll go ahead.
It's okay. The Hackleburg Town Council made a regular session on June twenty-fourth, two thousand nineteen at six P M. Mayor Culver asked for a motion to call the meeting to order. Councilmember Lally made a motion and was seconded by councilmember Don Barnwell. Kevin Barnwell led everyone in prayer, then the pledge was said by all. The attendance is listed below. Mayor Culver stated that the meeting was open for the transaction of business. A motion was made by councilmember Lally and seconded by councilmember Kevin Barnwell to cover only the items on the agenda. Voting was as follows, all ayes, no nays. The mayor asked the clerk to read the minutes from the June tenth, two thousand nineteen meeting. After reading, a motion was made by councilmember Lally and seconded by councilmember Kevin Barnwell to accept as presented. Voting was as follows, all ayes, no nays. The clerk presented a check register for the council to look over and to approve. After reviewing, a motion was made by councilmember Lally and seconded by councilmember Don Barnwell to pay all bills when due. Voting was as follows, all ayes, no nays. In old business, the council discussed the illegal dumping ordinance with town attorney Tony Glenn. Tony has drafted an ordinance and left it for the mayor and council to review. Also in old business, the Denson building was discussed. For Mayor Culver, Mr. Denson has contracted Gerald Hudson for a new roof and new windows. A motion was made by councilmember Marva and seconded by councilmember Kevin Barnwell to have Mr. Denson present us with the contract or go ahead with legal action. The Tyler Norton reimbursement was discussed in more old business. The clerk stated that a check had been received in the amount of fifteen thousand eight hundred fifty dollars for Tyler's reimbursement. In more old business, Bill Leprad's reimbursement was discussed. Nothing has been received for this, therefore, the mayor and council of Culver Town determined Tony Glenn to go ahead with legal action against Mr. Leprad. Tony Glenn updated the mayor and council on Jamie Blaker. He has drafted a lawsuit, so he and Mayor Culver need to get together to discuss. The mayor updated the council on the lids for the Jackson property and the pool area. This is a water issue, and Greg has talked with Tim Frederick about the situation, and he will be getting measurements and an estimate of the cost of the two lids. In new business, Kelly Olive with Don Wallace CPA presented the two thousand eighteen audit. She did an overview of the audit for the mayor and council and answered any questions they had. Kelly stated that we had an overall good audit with no material weakness. A motion was made by councilmember Lally and seconded by councilmember Wigginton to accept the two thousand eighteen audit. Voting was as follows, all ayes, no nays. The mayor and council has received and accepted a letter of resignation from town employee Steve Pickens. The mayor wanted to discuss with the council about how they would like to proceed in hiring a replacement. For councilmember Don Barnwell, Ronald Elrod has shown interest in contracting out the bush hogging for the rest of the season. Councilmember Lally wanted to go ahead and hire a full-time employee, asked at councilmember Kevin Barnwell. Mayor Culver made a motion to go ahead and hire Ronald Elrod part-time to do all the bush hogging until the season is over. In the meantime, put an ad in the paper for the job opening and take applications for two weeks. Councilmember Don Barnwell seconded the motion. Voting was as follows. A's Darrell Culver, Kevin Barnwell, Don Barnwell, Abby Lally, Darren Wigginton, Nate Eugene Marva. The clerk presented the mayor and council with a letter addressed to the Mary County Board of Registars from the town to ask permission to move our polling place from the rec center to the senior citizen building. The board will in turn send out cards to all who are registered to vote in Hackleburg informing them of the change. The mayor and council discussed the Fourth of July festival. Kenny Hallmark will be doing the sound, and we'll have a time set for open mic and karaoke. Dustin Busby and Craig are set to perform starting at six P M. The American Legion will host a parade at four P M. and fireworks will begin at nine P M. There was an issue with some of their citizens and council members that there were no flags on the poles throughout town. A motion was made by councilmember Lally and seconded by councilmember Don Barnwell to purchase brackets and flags to go on the poles for next year. Voting was as follows, all ayes, no nays. Mayor Culver and the council discussed the gravel and grade list. The list includes the following, Jimmy Abel's. A motion was made by councilmember Wigginton and seconded by councilmember Kevin Barnwell to gravel and grade sad drives. Voting was as follows, all ayes, no nays. There are two people on the brush pickup list, B.J. Carroll and Sheila Ayers. A motion was made by councilmember Marva and seconded by councilmember Kevin Barnwell to pick up this brush. Voting was as follows, all ayes, no nays. There being no further business to come before the council, a motion was made by councilmember Wigginton and seconded by councilmember Don Barnwell to adjourn.
Donald. You heard the reading of the minutes, any comments, questions?
Starting from the back, going toward the front, the Fourth of July festival, I was told for us to contact whoever was responsible for the fireworks show, said that was the best they'd ever seen. I'm talking about the fireworks.
It was pretty ass with the tire flips, nice. But it's good job.
Yeah, we had a good turnout. Gary Dollar gets those.
Could we get hold him in practice or anything? It'd be good, 'cause that was really bragging on him.
Yeah, we can. And everybody that helped with that, it was really good. Why he goes into that?
I think the fire department did really well, or rescue squad, I never did hear a final number.
Yeah, they was nuts.
They told me they sold over two hundred and fifty snow cones that day. Every barbecue sandwich they had, every Boston boat they had.
I never did see them, I wasn't.
Every hot dog, and I think they just had a few hamburgers.
I remember, yeah, I wonder if he didn't want you.
Oh, uh, we were talking about Ronald Elrod. He won't be contracting, and he's just gonna be part-time.
Hey, could they go ahead and start?
Yeah.
Yeah, I started working and everything.
Good, and he's doing a good job.
Good.
A lot of people bragging on him.
Yep.
On that same note, what's the status of the applications posted for two weeks? When is that?
Right now? No, I think right now, we are okay with what we got.
That's not what we agreed on, we said we would post the job.
There, there are circumstances where we need to wait.
Under.
I don't think, right now, on the record, but we'll discuss it later.
On the next one, on the, did we get approval to move the senior, the voting to the senior village?
Yes.
Okay.
And, in, in the mail, I have mine already, I've got my card.
I'm just working on it down at the courthouse.
I got a card. I have a paper, bold and red sharp.
Did we get the gravel and the brush pickup?
They will.
Cause a lot of times those are carryovers, ain't they?
Yeah.
Sheila Ayers has not got her picked up, she's back on here.
It, uh, might as well leave, want to get ready for the Fourth of July, so let's put us back away.
The lid over Doug looks good.
Did they get it put on?
Nah.
I didn't know they had it.
I'm about to open them, man, it's one down.
The one down swimming pool, they are, he's just gonna build a whole metal box, cause the that down there was just wood frames when they done all that, so he's kinda just having to build a metal box with a lid and everything, and we're gonna replace the meter and set the box, do it up there.
Gotta do it good.
We had an older, over there by the park too, that was round, it needed a top on it.
Yeah, just a manhole top, that will be ours, did you get a measurement on it?
I did, but I gave it to Tim and never did hear nothing else.
Manhole park?
Huh?
You talking about that little drain in the park?
No, it's of the round.
Were you going to have it longer?
Just where you turn off.
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah.
Cover where you turn it.
Okay.
That's actually a drain.
What about Bill Leprad's reimbursement?
He's on old business, so we'll see what we can. I think they're all okay.
Yes.
Need a motion to accept the minutes?
Motion.
Second.
And being done, all in favor? Everybody? Item number four, financial statement.
Somebody have an accident in one of the vehicles?
Yes.
Who?
Uh, Steve. William.
He done nine thousand dollars for damage to a new car car.
Right, so?
What did he hit?
Side of the bridge.
Oh, gosh. Was he on pursuit?
Yeah. Yeah. John?
Well, that's gonna be my next question, anytime we have a major wreck like that, do we have anything in place where they got to go in front of the board or anything? That's not in pursuit, or just, what happened? There's gotta be some kind of investigation on that.
He was patrolling, from what I understand, and, uh, I don't know if he got a call or what, and he just got over on the side of the bridge.
So, some distracted driving? Possibility?
I don't know.
I don't know, you know, they, they just passed that. You never know, the state of Tennessee just passed that law for, for us as pedestrians, distracted driving, but it does not affect our police force that has a laptop in there that you're looking at or anything else, so there is a lot of distracted driving going on.
And we can't pursue insurance money to counter that.
Yes, repair.
It just causes our rates to go up when we have this happen.
Yes.
We'd rather it didn't.
Right. Keep his back in total, back in the deposit, in the mail.
With a brandy.
Yeah.
If you'll notice at the bottom of the financial statement, there are checks overdue to school. I have it broken out for you.
Who's Studd's brother?
Fireworks.
That's fireworks.
Where are we purchasing, where Gary purchasing from?
What, such a good show?
Well, the bill is actually nearly a thousand dollars higher than we got.
Did we ever get the issue with the bills? Um, the radio station resolved, cause they still have not paid any?
Carla's working on the.
I'm getting that.
System to billing them.
Is he not gonna, just do the, since the power bills don't come in till later on, and his contract said he had to pay the rent first of the month, would you not look at doing the power bills later? Cause contract said he paid the pair, his rent, the first of the month. And since, I mean, he's not paying any rent at all.
He hadn't yet, he's going to.
I understand that, but that's not what the contract says.
Yeah, he, he.
And I understand that the, the power bill would have to take some time, because we've got full records to come up with that value. There's no sense why he's not paying the rent.
Yeah, he, he will. Susan's gotta get that voucher made up.
So, we have to send him a bill instead of him coming over here and paying it?
We don't have to, but, I mean.
I'm just curious.
Again.
Okay.
I mean, where we can, it don't matter.
Well, I mean, that's what you're supposed to do though, Darrell, I mean, if you, if you're renting something out and it's in the contract, they gotta come pay the bill. They should pay it, we shouldn't have to be waiting on them to come, send them a voucher, that's in that contract.
I don't, I don't think it matters really much either way, I mean, we know we've sent it out to him, and he knows he owes it, so.
He owes since January, he's been in that building since January, and this is July. And there's not been a first payment, no.
He started moving in.
He, I don't care when, he took ownership of that building in July, I mean, in January.
Anyway, we're, we're, we'll get it.
And this is already July, there's not been any kind of transactions on it, that's why I'm.
We'll get it.
Okay.
Everybody good on the financial statement?
Yep.
Yeah. And a motion to accept?
Motion to accept financial statement, yes. Yep.
Second. All in favor? Paying the bills?
All down the stairs, how they doing out there?
Some are done, for sure.
What's Center for Education?
That is, um, police, um, it's not a magazine, it's some kind of a little, um, some literature that they send out.
They don't encourage you to read it, do they?
No.
So I'm helping you out, Penny.
Uh, need a motion to pay the bills?
Motion.
Darren? Second.
Second.
Didn't want it to die for like a second.
No, maybe, but, all in favor? All right, old business, um, we're gonna skip to the Denson building, Gerald Hudson's here to update on where y'all are at with it.
We're supposed to start Wednesday, they supposed to come here Wednesday to start on.
So, but, Gerald, I guess y'all are trying to.
We signed a contract a month ago, but I've had other things to do. I just now get to it. I'd started the new house the day that we, I told him that I would do the job.
And we just wanted to hear that from you, cause I've been saying it for, you know, that long.
Yeah.
So, that's great, that's good.
It'd probably take a month and a half, two months, but we're gonna have to cut all of it out and totally buy in all of it.
When you get to it, could you fix that trailer, every cent of it?
But anyway, so y'all, y'all are meeting Wednesday?
Gerald. Wednesday.
Okay.
At eight o'clock.
Alright. I pulled Gerald over in town today and asked him if he'd stop by and update everybody, just.
Well, you're a doctor, you're the.
Yeah, yeah, he called him.
That's good, that's good.
Everything should be good. Alright. Jump back to item number one. We have been discussing the illegal dumping ordinance, and Tony, just filed a draft of it?
Yes.
Okay. Y'all got a copy of it in your folder?
The, uh, I thought Winfield would have one of those, but they apparently don't. They found the source of their dumping, and it was at the various, so they never passed one. I met with their attorney this afternoon.
Yeah. Paying restitution and the amount of cleanup cost and fine of five hundred dollars for each violation?
Yes.
As well as a jail sentence not to exceed six months, so.
Right.
I think that ought to deter them from.
I would think, that's pretty hefty for municipal ordinance. And that could run into a lot of money, because the way I, I wrote it, if they continued the violation, each day it continues to separate violations, right?
Is this your requirement?
Do what?
You require, I mean, you recommend this?
Yes.
Motion to, to go on.
Go with H.
Second.
I'll have to get a number put on it.
Alright, all in favor? Alright, item number three, old business, update on Bill Leprad?
Um, I've got a draft of a lawsuit, I have not filed it. Um, but I can't get that filed, been a week or two. My secretary's been on vacation the last couple of weeks, and I ain't got much done.
Is everybody in favor of moving ahead with the legal action?
Good day. I'll need to get a filing fee to file that too, it's, uh, run somewhere around a hundred and forty dollar thing.
Motion for Greg to pay that?
Yes.
No. Don Barnwell.
Great, Tracy, my friend.
Yeah, good luck, Bill, man. Just go ahead and make the motion, and I'll call Carla and.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll get you.
Fisher. Sounds good.
Motion to pay that.
Agree to move forward with legal action? And pay filing fee?
Yep.
Okay. Uh, item number four, update on Jamie Blaker?
I've got that one ready too, I need the same thing, I've got that secret to go. So I'll need to file a fee on it also.
Alright. We need two separate motions on that, yes, so.
Yeah.
Me get a motion for Bill Leprad. Tabby?
Second.
Kevin? All in favor?
Aye.
Everybody? Okay, on Jamie Blaker, same thing?
Same motion.
Okay.
It'll be the same filing fee, no, it'll be a higher filing fee, cause that's a circuit court case. It exceeded the jurisdiction of the lower court.
Okay. Alright. Update on Jamie Blaker, agree to move forward with legal action? And pay filing fee? Need a motion?
All like motion.
Kevin? Second.
Second.
Kevin? All in favor?
Aye.
Everybody? Item number five, update on lids for Jackson and Pool. Greg's pretty much handled that all over, already covered it. That's satisfactory for everybody? Moving on, new business. As y'all know, we're trying to get a grant to pay some of these roads that are in. As y'all know, we're trying to get a grant to pay some of these railroads that are extremely bad condition. And, uh, we need to pass a resolution approving small city competitive grant funds through the state of Alabama, CDBG program. Be resolution HB seven eight one nine.
What is our matching fund that we gotta provide?
Seventy-two thousand.
Seventy-two thousand?
Yep.
So Mayor, is this not what we're gonna try to parlay against those other money submitted cooper's?
His money is, uh, from what I understand, contingent on us getting the grant. But yeah, we will be able to use the, uh, two hundred and fifty thousand committed by our.
That was my understanding, yeah.
So with that two fifty and our seventy-two thousand, we'll be able to use that for a match. So we need a motion to pass a resolution HB seven eight one nine?
Motion.
There. Second.
Second. It's your run.
Well, I might have a motion there.
All in favor?
No.
Everybody? All right, item number two, owner of back doors, they do not, they don't lock like they should. And we've had two, uh, two companies come up and give us a bid on it. Well, they, they came up and looked at it and we've got one bid and waiting on one bid. One of them is the swipe, like you, a card. And the other one is the keypad, the push button like we have. Um, neither one of them will be over five thousand. It'll be between thirty-five hundred and five thousand. So we really need to take care of these back doors where people can't just walk in. Which I know is hard to, uh, hard, hard to say what you'd do before you know what the bid is. But if they come in between thirty-five hundred and five thousand, are y'all okay with going ahead and doing that?
Yeah, and I would kinda like to do the numbers like we got already. If we could, you could.
It's, it's cheaper to do that.
We might have to change the numbers of all of them and have them all the same, but looks to me like that'd be our best bet. What do you think, Carl?
Don't matter to me, just so we have wherever the lock get during the day.
So hey, we're guarded.
It's all right.
I, I think, I mean, it's probably better.
The keypad is cheaper.
Yeah.
It'll definitely be cheaper.
Well, you can.
As long as you don't hand the keypad out to everybody in the world. It's not wanting to be anything. I mean, you're only keeping honest folks in the house, so once you start doing this, so.
That's true.
I mean.
So Don, you can't have it.
Is it? It's more for security reasons. You don't want somebody coming in on top of them right through that back door with a gun.
Yeah.
And they could come straight in. And so, I mean, it needs to happen.
Well, right now we get people come in the back door to pay their bill.
Right.
To, I mean, Carla'll be in there working and not know anybody's in there.
Turn around, they're sitting in a chair.
What's the access to changing the code? Would we have to call them in each time? Or can we change the code here?
Yeah.
So after you get it changed to the code type, you might wanna have some kind of policy in place that you change that code every six months? Yeah, okay.
That's right. And then some of those lets it out and they changed.
Exactly, okay.
We know the one company has been doing that.
Yeah, that's in the, in the folder. Uh, total cost on it, on theirs was thirty-six ninety-four. Um, I was trying to remember their names.
Affordable lock in?
Affordable lock, yeah.
They installed the doors originally.
Romans didn't give us a bid? They don't do that?
I mean, I don't know if they do that, but.
How long do we gotta wait on that open?
Well, if y'all are good with the keypad, that's what these folks do.
Carol, what's special about those keypads? I just put one on Dr. Mar or Vence's today. It was a hundred and twenty something dollars.
Yeah, I'm like, Don, you're talking to wrong people.
You know how it is.
Yeah, I, I put them on Dr. Mar and Vence's. That, that's what they got on their office doors, entrance doors and everything.
Well, we'll have Gerald look at it tomorrow.
I mean, the lock was a hundred and fifty dollars and it ain't that hard to put on. I mean, they have to drill a hole in this type door. I don't know what you got, but I mean.
Well, it's got the vertical latches on.
Yep, but you could put the lock above that where it would, they'd go into it. You would still lead back for passage.
They still can use the push bar to go out.
Yeah, go in and out, but you all have to use the, the lock for entrance.
Will you do?
Well, he needs, he's gotta look at it first before he can do it.
I think so, I mean.
We got two double doors and one single.
So we're making a motion to get another bid?
Yes.
Okay.
So we'll give them some bidding, won't we?
Yes.
When, when you.
You said thirty-five hundred, it'd be about three, man. Gerald, we still cheaper. Couple hundred dollars, I mean, a door.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's still like cheaper than we was.
Yeah, if you don't care, Gerald, look at it and see what you can do on it. Then, uh, meet again and hire.
Gerald's gonna have to come and meet.
He done saved us three thousand dollars. I have a cheap gravity. He's built one building and saved us three thousand dollars, yeah.
Well, this thing y'all sitting on, after tornado, I moved it over here for free. It was a lot of money to pay that.
Appreciate that, yeah.
Moved one over here for?
Yes.
Oh!
I took, uh, this amount, some other buildings, brought it back and put it over here and did charge sound that.
Yeah.
We appreciate it. And we can't pay you now.
So those locks are going up.
Yeah, I thought it was the same thing, but totally different. Now, if you can get us a bid on it.
Yeah, you can get a most block close. It's a hundred, I think a hundred and twenty maybe at most.
Okay. Sounds good. All right, item number three, discuss a standing order on cleanup ordinance.
Uh, last meeting, y'all had told me to put that on here, so.
Yeah. That was, uh, we were gonna ask an official letter to be sent out to the house by the swimming pool. And what was the other one?
Woody Holland House?
Yes.
Yeah, that was the Woody Holland House.
Yeah, that was the two. The people in the community has been asking why.
You don't remember Woody Holland? Get him, he got your hair cut?
Woody Holland, he was two young.
Oh, Woody smoked a cigarette.
Yeah.
Oh, he's, yeah. Man, he'd smoke three packs while he's cutting my hair.
He'd do that, man.
And he'd say, you know?
Okay.
So Tony to draft a letter for those two?
All right, need a motion for Tony to draft a letter for.
Motion.
Those two partners.
It's for.
For.
All in favor?
I think y'all had, didn't speak up on that here.
Tabby and.
Who, who actually owns the house down there?
Probably someone.
By the pool?
Eddie Burnham.
Linda Ables lived there. I don't know if she owns it or not.
Owns it now?
Does she?
Yeah.
Linda Ables owns it. Linda Carroll's.
Okay.
Somebody on Birmingham, I don't know who's owning it.
We just have to pull it up on the front.
I'll get you some addresses.
Yeah.
There, uh, Grayden Gravel, Emily Parker, nine hundred on Hackenberg Road. Need a motion?
I'll make my.
Kevin, second. We're gonna sit. All in favor?
Uh.
Brush pickup, Betty Howe, Sheila Ayers. Need a motion?
Motion.
Tabby and Mary. All in favor?
Uh.
Uh, remind you? Need a motion to get there?
So we.
Motion. Everybody's called motion.
I need you, so.
We're doing.
You can go next door now. You can go next door.
Not today.